All right, here we are in the Fiscal Rangers Edit Cave. And I just wanted to give a little brief overview about this City of Taveras video. Just wanted to point out, here, I have, I do editing in a porch that's not heated, except for that heater, and it's 63 degrees in here! And so the sacrifice is, I'm watching the White House press briefing while I am editing the City of Taveras meeting video. Now, and the reason I'm doing this little video is that, just to explain a little bit, I wasn't intending on doing a video because I had to go to another meeting and video that one, and then it turned out it was running shorter and there was a couple of interesting topics that I explained in the notes. And so, I just thought I'd show you what I go through here. This is the Edit Cave. And, you gotta keep an eye on Drudge Report, and I use Adobe Premiere Elements to do the video editing. You can see here is one of the screenshots. The camera that I use is kind of a simple Sony Cam, and it takes automatic pictures when somebody smiles. So that's why sometimes I have several pictures, but this one, I was, not many people smiled, so Kirby Smith, you gotta smile more. Uh, the, and the camera has to be on you, too. So anyway, I've just, this is a simple video. It starts a little bit into the meeting, because there was a topic that was kinda interesting. And it goes through the end where City Manager John Drury talks about the starting's planning for the new budget year. And so I thought I'd just throw this in. So the first part of the meeting was chopped off, I didn't actually do it, and then I turned on the camera and just handheld it. So, anyway, I thought I'd just throw this in for a little bit of explanation of the process I go through. This video software, it takes about an hour for every hour of video. This was one of the shortest meetings I've ever seen, so I was able to video to the end. And it was pretty routine, and that's why I'm throwing a little bit of this in. And so, the edit process here, you can see I drag pictures that I've got that were captured by the camera, because I didn't take any separate pictures with my other camera. And then I drag the videos over to this, and insert them into this timeline here. And I can compress, I can show you, I'm going to just move that over so you can see, now the whole timeline is compressed, it shows that it's a total of about 28 minutes long. And so some of these meetings, they'll go for two hours, and I'll have several segments. This one, there's only two video segments in it, and this part, which will be in there, so it'll be longer than the 30 minutes that I show right now. And so that's what I go through. I also will drag soundtracks over occasionally if there's a lot of pictures at the front end, there aren't enough here, I'm not gonna do that during the port, the first part where I show the pictures. So this is what I go through with this. Anybody wants to donate $1,000 to my account, I can go get a much better camera with an external microphone and do some better videos than this. But otherwise, this is what you get. And Drudge Report, jobless claims, lowest since 1973. Meanwhile, the newspapers and the TV keep talking about Russia and other things, and they don't tell you about this stuff, but Drudge Report does, and I recommend monitoring it, because he has a lot of what the real truth is going on. And the other thing is, if you wanna keep up on national news, is go over to youtube.com and go to the White House account or channel, and there they have White House press briefings, and I watch those almost every day, because that's where you also get the truth about what's happening. Like, I just watched the one where they went through over an hour of press questions about the President's health exam that he just had yesterday, or actually last Friday. And so, there you go, there's a little bonus.
They can't be worn and tattered. Well, something that looks worn and tattered to me may not look worn and tattered, too. And I remember, that's why we had to be firm with that, and I'm thinking the same way with this. I love it, I think it looks good. So, we'll just go with it, and we'll, each thing that comes in, we will have to approve again, correct?
Yeah, it's more than 25% of the face of the building. The normal ways, they would get a permit, submit, and if it's a mural board, 25%, the board approves it. And that's just, you know, just a double check, to make sure that it's not obscene, offensive to the neighborhood, degrade property values.
I don't mind the, I don't mind the thing, I just wanna make sure we do it clean for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna move on to tab nine, property purchase, Mod Street, John Drury.
There's a map above you. I showing City Hall, the city parking lot, the parks and rec building, and then there's a star on a home that I'm gonna discuss with you today. Between the city-owned police station parking lot and the city-owned recreation building is a small house. The man lived in the house and passed away. In his will, he indicated that it should first be offered to the city of Taveras after he passed. The attorney who is disposing of this property has obtained an appraisal and has provided it to the city. I've provided you a copy of it, and that's a local appraiser. The attorney will hold two or three estate sales over the next several months, after which the city will be asked to either purchase the property or not. If it's not purchased, it'll go on the market and be sold. A reoccurring complaint that the city receives in the city is a need for additional parking. Taveras is the only city in the Triangle area that does not have a city-owned downtown municipal parking garage. Mount Door, Eustis, and Leesburg all have double-decker city parking garages in their downtown. The city has an opportunity to purchase this property with an appraised value of $110,000, and then could start the planning efforts for its first downtown triple-decker parking garage, which will greatly address parking concerns, especially when there are large events present. This unforeseen opportunity was not budgeted into the budget, and the timeframe doesn't work that we can include it into next year's budget. Fortunately, the city does budget reserves for unforeseen issues and opportunities that present themselves during a fiscal year. There's currently about $1 million budgeted in reserves this fiscal year for such an event. And I'm recommending that the city move forward with the purchase of this property for $110,000. One of the things, just from a parking garage and parking perspective, most cities have parking garages where you almost have to drive through the event to get to them. Leesburg, Mount Door, and Eustis, depending on how the event, what streets are closed, it's a little hard to get to their parking garages. The City of Taveras is fortunate that we have Mod Street. All of our events, as you know, go on Ruby Street and Main Street. And what's unique about the plan for parking, as you know, is a parking garage over by the Pavilion off of Mod Street, this parking garage off of Mod Street, and then the city, the county parking garage off of Mod Street. These are all backstage. So, what it allows for is, if you are leaving an event, big, huge, money-bra-type event on Main Street or on Ruby Street, once you get through the crowds, you can take an elevator or an escalator right to the parking garage, and there's nothing behind you. You can go north, east, or west very quickly and leave the community. Same with parking. As we have events in the downtown, you'll be able to take a major corridor, St. Clair or St. Clair, light it off the 441, come into the community, and hit any one of the three parking garages, go to an event, experience it, and leave. Some cities have a brand, great city to visit, parking problem, and they're connected. Some cities have a brand, great city to visit, awesome parking. I think this is going to create a brand that other cities won't be able to capture, because their parking garages require you to drive through the event practically to get to it. This doesn't do that. So I'm encouraging you over to purchase the property, as the owner was hoping after he passed, and then over the next year or two, work with the staff to plan our first municipal downtown-owned parking garage. One of three will have over the life of really the downtown. And I can answer any questions if you have.
What would be the immediate use of this building, once we purchase it? Future list to turn to a parking garage, but is there any plans?
I would suggest demo, demolishing it.
I mean, this isn't something we could've budgeted for. I mean, it sounds like a fair, very fair price, and this is why we have reserves for unforeseen projects like this that do come up. And I mean, I'm fully supportive, you know, moving forward, turning this into a parking garage. I think that would be great for the downtown area, so I'd be fully in support of making a motion to approve purchasing this property and using reserves.
I'll second that motion.
Right, we have a motion in the second, any more discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to put some things on the record here. First of all, it's kinda cool that the city went to the owner of the property when we bought the house that's there on St. Clair, St. Clair Abrams. And he turned us down, but then said he gave us first right of refusal upon his death, and that was in his will, so that's pretty good. I wasn't really a big fan of a parking garage, that we have a five-story parking garage right down the street, until you realize that the five-story parking garage is not owned by the City of Taveras, and we have no control over when it's open and when it's closed. So it can be closed at any time, whether we have a special event or not. The counties sometimes assist us, but they don't have to. So they can have complete control over it, and if there's ever a rift between the city and the county, they could shut their parking garage during any of our sub-special events, and then we would have a parking issue. And everybody knows how I feel about reserves, but this is why we do a 90-10 split, so I'm okay with this one. I know it's shocking.
I just wanna add, too, I mean, I would be afraid that if we wanna go forward on this, if we do decide later on down the road, if we wanna buy this, and somebody else is gonna repurchase it, I don't think we would ever have a chance to get this for $110,000.
We have a motion in the second, all those.
Aye.
Passes five to zero. All right, we're gonna move on to tab ten, the Fire Union Bargaining Team.
City Council Member Bobby Grineers, City Administrator myself, and the Fire Chief have represented the management team for bargaining sessions with the Fire Union. Once the management team and the union reach a meeting of minds, we draft a collective bargaining agreement that's reviewed by the Human Resource Department, the City Attorney, Finance Department, and then presented to the full council for your final consideration. It's appropriate to designate the 2018 Management Collective Bargaining Team on behalf of the City Council. I'm recommending that we keep the same team that we had before, if the council is good with that.
Bobby, you good with that?
I'm good with it.
Make your motion.
I make a motion to approve. It's either way is.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Moving on to tab eleven, establish, better, apply 19 broad budget priorities, John Drury.
It's been the practice of the City Council to set broad budget priorities for the City Administrator to use as guiding principles in developing a budget that is commensurate with the City Council's overall budget goals. When I get your broad budget goals, you know, and these are lofty broad budget goals, I then begin to formulate the budget with every department head, whether it's Fire, Police, Parks, Recreation, Community Development, or Utilities, what, Seaplane Base, or Pavilion. It helps me do what I can to make sure we're all rowing in the same direction. So it begins here, in January or February, where you set those broad budget priorities. As we know, the next budget doesn't begin till October 1st, 2018, quite a few months away. But we developed this budget throughout the months of May, June, July, and with you all, the workshops, July, August, and September. So we're beginning that process. We have several government functions that I've laid out for you here. The General Government, which is supported by our meddling taxes and fees, that's your police, your fire, rescue, libraries, parks, recreation. Utilities, which is more fee-based budget. Solid Waste, garbage collection, which is fee-based. The Pavilion on the Lake, which is a combination of fee-based and general fund. And then we have capital projects, large capital projects. And then we also have another one, which is our debt service program. I've given and attached to your agenda three exhibits. The recent historical budget information over the last five or so years, a summary of that, and where we are today. I've given you future budget information on all the funds, things to think about, what's going on with property values, what's going on with new construction, and what's going on on the cost of goods, employees, healthcare, electricity, gas. And then I've given you a third exhibit that gives you a listing of all the initiatives, projects, where they stand today, where they're at. We are, as we all know, a fairly progressive city that is going through a Renaissance period, and we are growing our city. And these projects identified here, we're like several pages, really kinda showing explore where things are at, that we'll be working on, they're multi-year initiatives and projects. What I'm asking you today to do is give us, give me some broad budget priorities, so you can, in doing so, talk about whether or not you wanna maintain or not maintain a similar level of service. One year, the council decided to improve its level of service from basic life support to advanced life support in its fire department. That was a big step towards saving lives by having paramedics at every call, and lives were saved, and people came here and talked about their lives being saved, because we went from basic support to advance. With that came a cost, and it was a big cost. And you, as the stewards of the tax dollar, and representing the folks that elected you, made a collective decision to go forward with that. That's an example of an increased level of service, and of course, the things that go along with it. So maintaining or not maintaining a similar level of service in any area, police, fire, rescue, parks, recreation, entertainment districts, special events. Adding or not adding new programs and services, you know, we're talking about the future of art, culture, performing arts. Are there programs and services that we wanna add as our community grows? Employee compensation and benefits, we work with that every year, hardworking men and women who are our police department, fire department, utility department, and compensating them and motivating them to come in and work every day and serve the people you represent. And then our large capital projects, I've identified a few that are on the table and have been talked about. The Public Works Complex, the Performing Arts Center, the expansion of the library, street paving program, alleyways, we get people coming into our community that live in the downtown, that are looking at their alleyways. We have people that live throughout the community that are looking at older roads and looking for them to be repaved. And every year, over the last several years, since we came out of the Great Recession of 2009, you have slowly began to bring back the paving program and increase it, and we're going into our communities, repaving old roads, putting in new sidewalks where ones are cracked or non-existent. So I'm looking for your broad budget priorities. I'll take notes as you discuss, think about it. The options are to continue to think about it, bring this up at the next meeting, or the options are to talk about it today, give me your broad budget directions, and we will begin the budgeting process for fiscal year 2019, which begins October 1st, 2018, and ends September 30th, 2019. Do you have any questions of me before you begin to deliberate broad budget decisions? Seeing none back to you, Mayor.
Right, Council, would you like to put some thought into this and bring it back, or would you like to discuss it tonight?
So, I was gonna ask Mayor that, we received this on Friday, Friday night. This is pretty big. I hate to be like our federal government and kick the can down the road, but this is something I think that I would like more than just a couple of days to think about and come up with. I've got some ideas right now, I think rest of council wants to do their ideas, that's fine, but I would like to have a little more time to put more thought process into it.
Okay, it looks like we're all in agreement, I also agree, I'd like to spend a little bit more time on this, so we'd like to bring this back.
All right, and read through exhibit A, B, and C, and I can set up individual appointments with each and every one of you and elaborate on all of them, and we can have a thorough discussion anytime, and then that can help you get those collective thoughts or individual thoughts, and then we can bring it back at the next meeting and have a collective discussion. So, I table it till the next meeting.
Do we need the motion to table it, or yes please?
No, we're good. He's settled.
We're good, okay.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to agenda item nine, which is old business. Okay, we're gonna move to agenda item 10, new business. I think new business would be that, because he's new, our Mayor's Youth Council, we had one of the members drop out, and so she was replaced with this gentleman, am I correct? Why don't you get up, this is what we made them all do, you need to get up and give us your name and what grade you're in, and what made you wanna do this, a little bit about you.
My name is Jose Severino, I'm in 11th grade, and what really inspired me to want to be a part of this, when the opportunity came to me, was, I've always been a fan of politics, but not the dirty side of politics, you know, the party lines, none of that, natural policymaking, and seeing what it takes to actually run, whether it's a nation, or a city, or a county, see all the pieces that work together, because at the end of the day, it's regular people. And we see even just this, in the 2016 election, how everything's kinda glorified, but at the end of the day, it's still people who are just regular people, who are making our city work, and so, things are much easier.
If you wanna have fun, Eric.
Yep, well, welcome, Jose, and welcome to the City of Taveras Mayor's Youth Council, and you're actually going to be paired with me, so we'll be working together. There's certain requirements, there's a syllabus that I'm sure you've seen, and you could try to play catch-up right now, get caught up with whatever you need to do, and I guess you already know in different meetings and different events. So, just to remind y'all, there's a little Arbor Bay event coming up, which you might find pretty interesting, that's gonna be here in the city on Arbor Bay, so keep watch on that, but welcome, Jose.
Looking forward to that.
Thank you. Any more new business? All right, we're gonna move on to audience to be heard, Ms. Betty Burley.
Betty Burley, 214 North New Hampshire Avenue. In January of 96, the headlines were "City welcomes New Year State Grant." "Taveras has reason to celebrate." The city was notified on December 20th that its grant request to purchase 92 acres for $635,000 was selected for funding. The Taveras project, which targeted the acreage for a park, was among 59 chosen through the State Preservation 2000 Program. There were 80 competitors for those 59 slots, and Taveras ranked 35th in scoring. A grants writer was hired for the job. Under an agreement worked out by the city, her fee of $3,000 was paid by the current property owner, so city taxpayers were out of penny for this. Tentatively called Lake Dorre Recreation Park, the 92 acres lies on the south shore of the lake. Only passive uses are allowed, such as picnic tables, walkways, and these were submitted in the grant proposal. Other improvements to the property included an access road, restroom, sport walk, parking area, and nature trail. Appropriate signs and needed to be erected. Elements to improve the property may cost an additional $240,000, with the source for this money not yet identified. The entire project may be phased in over a five-to-seven year period. While the original grant proposal requested funding for 92 acres, there are actually 102 acres available. Because of the restrictive nature of the grant, the additional 10 acres will be purchased by the city to build either a fire department substation or a civic center. The City Council will have to decide that.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Burgess.
Good afternoon, I just wanted to thank you all for planning ahead and looking forward to the growth that we're gonna have in the future, and buying that house, and thank you for using the reserves, that's what they're there for. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we're gonna move on to reports. Mr. Drury.
The only thing I've got in addition to what's in your package is photos. 3:30, February 7th, if you could make it, we do an annual photo of the City Council and the department heads. If your schedule permits, about a half hour before the next council meeting, we'll have a photographer, and we'll do our annual team leadership photograph. That's all I have.
And John, could you send out reminders for that, 'cause I need reminders.
7th, did I say 6th? I'm sorry, February 7th. You will get an email- You will get an email probably the day before.
All right, Mr. O'Callaghan.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Chief? Mr. Tweedy?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Dillon? Second?
Exe.
Okay. Anything?
Mayor, vice mayor, council members, it's an honor to work for this wonderful city, and I look forward to working with all of you. Very excited.
I just realized I hadn't officially met you, so... Because I was looking, and I thought, well, you said that Chris Thompson's seat, so it needed to be, but... So, yeah, for everyone, this is our new... He took Chris Thompson's place. This is Mr. Dillon, James Dillon. So, welcome to the City of Taveries. Happy to have you. Mr. Hayes?
Nothing tonight, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. Tucker? Chief?
Love you, Mayor, thank you.
Cameron?
Nope, thank you.
Lori?
Later, I have my thing.
Clay?
Nothing.
Mr. Williams?
Maybe they're down the shores reading it right. They're pushing far.
All right, council member Greeneers?
Just some real short, because I know Kirby loves the history. Kirby, you've been around a long time, Central Florida. We know Buddy Pittman, broadcaster. He has a new TV show on WCF called Central Florida Road Trip, and it airs on Thursday at 8 o'clock. Actually, he's trying to call in on me in the last few minutes. He wants to do Taveries. And, yeah, and it's, you know, I'm just... It says, "Central Florida Road Trip takes you on a journey into the history and uniqueness of Central Florida neighborhoods. Journey with us Thursday nights. It explores the history and perks of Central Florida neighborhoods and stuff." So, he's trying to call me, and I told him I'll call him after the meeting, and... Because he wants to do Taveries, which I'm very happy. It's a good show.
Well, that's good news. Councilmember Boggs?
I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of things. First of all, James, welcome. I'm glad to see you sitting here. I welcomed you before when you got hired, but now you're here. You say you're happy to work with us. But look at Brad. You'll be like Brad after a couple of months, so I don't know.
Remember, I... Remember, he worked for me.
Right. Right, I know.
I survived.
So, the next thing, Bobby, it's kind of weird that you brought the history, because I decided not to do history until you started doing it again, so... I'll do history next week, or next council meeting. I want to say my thoughts and prayers to Perry Reagan and his family, because he's in the hospital, and I hear he's doing better on a road to recovery, but he's a good guy, and I'd hate to see anything bad happen to him. And last but not least, this month is National Donor Month, so go out and donate a pint of blood or two. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Singer?
Just wanted to say, I know Mayor dismissed this a little bit ago, but we do have our first annual Arbor Day celebration this Saturday at Wood Park. I'm looking forward to that. And then we also have a movie in the square that's on this Friday. They're going to be showing the Lorax, kind of ties in with Arbor Day theme. So, that's kind of neat, and yeah, it's going to be cold, so I think you might want to bring a blanket, but it's been a nice event. They've had a couple of those over there in the past couple of months, so those are really joyful, so hopefully we can get some people out there. Did want to report that I was very excited that the ADA restrooms at the civic center are finally complete. I know it took a little bit longer than expected, but then again, it was a project that probably should have been done about 60 years ago, so I think a couple of weeks over is not too bad. And I do want to commend the staff, because it's my understanding that the project had come in about 10% under budget, so that was great, but I'm glad to see that. It's something that we really needed, and I'm glad to see that's done, and I want to thank this board for, you know, pushing that forward. It's great. I went over there and checked it out, and it's really nice. The other thing, I just want to thank James for coming. We're glad to have you on board and looking forward to having you at all of our meetings. Good to see the youth council here. We always like to have our youth council members here, so thank you for coming, and you know, please come to as many meetings as you possibly can. Like I said before, just pay attention to what we're doing up here, because if you're a checkout, you will be doing the exact same thing. You'll be sitting up here, you'll be making motions and all that stuff, so just pay attention to what's going on up here. I think that's all that I have. Mayor?
All right, and I just want to... We haven't seen y'all since last year, but I wanted to say, hopefully that all of your New Year has... It's good. It's good for everybody, I hope. So, hopefully it brings you a lot of health and wealth and happiness. Without further objection, this meeting is adjourned.